Check. Check. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of Dana Point for September 21st, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Mayor Pro Tem Miller.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, is there a need for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have two items this evening. The first is our quarterly litigation strategy review, which involves a conference with legal counsel, including potential discussion of the following existing litigation, as well as our agenda has a type on it. So we have the following existing litigation items, but we should also have two potential litigation items, which are subject to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. The following existing litigation cases are pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. And the existing cases are: City of Dana Point versus Southern California Recovery Center, Orange County Superior Court, case number 30201801012750. City of Dana Point versus Sunshine Group, also known as the Seaside Inn. Orange County Superior Court, case number 30201700915900. Concerned residents of Dana Point versus the City of Dana Point, Orange County Superior Court, case number 201901117892-cuttcxC. Next is Suzanne Aguirre, trustee of the Aguirre Family Trust, versus City of Dana Point, Orange County Superior Court, case number 30202101217610, CUWM-CJC. And finally, we have the Center for Land Management versus City of Dana Point, Orange County Superior Court, case number 30202101219668, CUOR-CJC. Our second closed session item is Conference with Labor Negotiator Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency's designated representative is the city manager, Mr. Kilbrew. We're discussing unrepresented and represented employees, all positions in the city, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, are there any public comment items on the closed session?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Then we are recessed to closed session until 6:00 PM.
Items this evening. The first is our quarterly litigation strategy, strategy review, which involves a conference with legal counsel, including potential discussion of the following existing litigation as well as. Our agenda has a type on it. So we have the following existing litigation items, but we should also have two potential litigation items, which are subject to government code section five four nine five six point nine D two. The following existing litigation cases are pursuant to government code section five four nine five six nine D one. And the existing cases are city of Dana Point versus Southern California Recovery Center. Orange County Superior Court number case number three zero two zero one eight zero one zero one two seven five oh. City of Dana Point versus Sunshine Group, also known as the seaside end. Orange County Superior Court case number three oh two oh one seven oh oh nine one five nine zero zero. Concerned residents of Dana Point versus the city of Dana Point, Orange County Superior Court case number two zero one nine zero one 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 seven eight nine two dash C U T T C X C. Next is Suzanne Aguirre, trustee of the Aguirre Family Trust versus city of Dana Point, Orange County Superior Court case number three oh two oh two one oh one two one seven six one oh. C U W M C J C. And finally, we have the Center for Land Management versus city of Dana Point, Orange County Superior Court case number three zero two zero two one zero one two one nine six six eight. C U O R C J C. Our second closed session item is conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six. The agency's designated representative is the city manager, Mr. Kilbrew. We're discussing unrepresented and represented employees, all positions in the city, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, are there any public comment items on the closed session?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Then we are recessed to closed session until six P M.
All right, we're ready. Good evening and welcome to the Dana Point City Council Meeting for September 21st, 2021. We are reconvened from closed session. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilmember Valar. Thank you, Councilmember Valar. We have a couple, one present, two, excuse me. We have a presentation for the Business of the Quarter tonight and then a presentation from Congressman Levin's office. Let's start with the Business of the Quarter. Mr. George Muns from the Waldorf Astoria Monarch Beach, would you join me up front, please? All right. So tonight, as part of our Business of the Quarter program, we are recognizing the Waldorf Astoria, the newly named Waldorf Astoria Monarch Beach Resort, and also using this as an opportunity to welcome George, who is the relatively new General Manager. Welcome back to the city of Dana Point. George has worked here in Dana Point before, formerly at the Ritz Carlton, if I have that correct, right? 2010 to 2010. Wow, okay, for quite a long time, longer than I recognized. All right, well, welcome back. The Waldorf Astoria, while the brand is new, the property there is an important part of our city and the community here. For a long time, I've been contributing to our community through the Falconer Program, which sounds silly, but helps manage our water quality. Fireworks at that property are a huge hit for the Fourth of July for everyone who might live on the side of the headlands that can't see Doheny, the right side. And all the stuff that goes on at charity events at the golf course, the culinary or the hospitality program in conjunction with Dana Hills High School. But in particular, I wanted to have you here tonight because of an experience I had recently. I was at the Dana Point Surf Club Local Surf Shop Challenge a month ago or so, down at the beach where our local surf shops, Jackson Infinity, Hobies, and Killer Dana were competing against each other for the Dana Point Cup. And as I was sitting there with Eric Diamond, he was calling out, thanking some of the sponsors, and the Waldorf Astoria sponsored the Dana Point Surf Club Local Surf Shop Challenge. And I thought that that was symbolic of exactly what our community is striving for. No matter how five-star we get, we want to be authentic, local, real. And the only way you can do that is by honoring and respecting those, our history and culture and those small community organizations. So kudos to you, your property, your staff, your ownership, for recognizing the importance of those community groups and community events in our town. We thank you very much. We're honored to have you as a part of our community, and thank you, and we're happy to recognize you as the Business of the Quarter. That's for you. Safe words?
Yeah, can I speak without that? I think I can project.
So first. All right. Thanks to George and congratulations to the Waldorf, and really, kudos to all of our hotels and resorts for the hard work they did through COVID, and it's great to see them thriving again. I see already up at the podium is Terry Van Horn from Congressman Levin's office to give us a presentation, update on things that are going on at Songs Down South. Terry, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Am I on? Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Terry Van Horn, and I'm here on behalf of Congressman Levin. Thank you, Mayor Federico, Mayor Pro Tem Mueller, wherever you are, and Councilmembers Vazoric, Frost, and Valar for inviting our office to present on Congressman Levin's work to deal with the nuclear waste at Santa Inoffray Nuclear Generating Station, or SONGS for short. As you know, setting up Songs or setting up the Songs Task Force was a top priority of the congressman's, and upon his election in 2019, he invited local stakeholders and experts to form the task force to address the safety challenges at Songs and formulate policy recommendations to address the hazardous waste there. From those recommendations, Congressman Levin identified eight actions that he can take as a federal representative, and he has made progress on many of those. The first was to create a bipartisan caucus in Congress. Earlier this summer, he created the Spent Nuclear Fuel Solutions Caucus with his colleague, Republican Rodney Davis of Illinois. The Spent Nuclear Fuel Solutions Caucus is comprised of members of Congress who have a mutual goal of driving progress on the safe storage, transportation, and disposal of spent nuclear fuel across the country, regardless of whether or not they have a preferred solution. So there are currently 10 members who have joined the caucus so far, including Orange County Republican Representative Michelle Steele. The first meeting is scheduled next week on September 29th. The second recommended action from the task force is to prioritize the removal of spent fuel from high-risk areas. This is where the Spent Fuel Prioritization Act comes in, a bill which the congressman introduced in the last session of Congress, and this bill puts the nuclear waste at Songs at the front of the line to be sent to any federal nuclear waste storage or disposal site. He is now waiting to introduce it again in conjunction with other bills. Another recommendation from the task force involved breaking the gridlock on consent-based siting for nuclear waste disposal. It has been generally accepted that using a consent-based process to find a site for disposal of the nation's nuclear waste is the best way to ensure we are, excuse me, successful in actually opening a national nuclear successful in actually opening a national nuclear waste disposal site. The report recommended breaking the gridlock by exploring the concept of empowering states to perform environmental review of the transport, siting, and storage of spent nuclear fuel. This gives states skin in the game and thus more leverage with the federal government to make a fair deal for storage and disposal. The idea has been championed by the Natural Resources Defense Council, or the NRDC, but while they recognize the idea as promising, its implications haven't been adequately studied. So our legislative team has been working with NRDC on draft legislation to study an amendment to the Atomic Energy Act, and we are now working on a draft. We expect to introduce that legislation soon. The fourth recommendation is the creation of the Nuclear Waste Administration. This would consolidate many of the federal responsibilities related to nuclear fuel, all under one agency. And our team has been talking to regular, excuse me, relevant Senate offices about the Nuclear Waste Administration Act because they will ultimately drive the timeline on this bill. And the fifth recommendation pushes for a requirement that nuclear waste storage canisters have a design life of 100 years. The canisters at Songs are not designed to last 100 years, but hopefully, they won't be there that long. But since we currently have no place to move the waste, the idea of requiring canisters to have a design life of 100 years was recommended. We have a draft of a bill that requires nuclear waste storage sites, which Song currently is, to use canisters with 100-year lifespans. We are now getting technical feedback from the Nuclear Regulatory Commission on this bill. The sixth recommendation requires resident inspectors at decommissioning nuclear power plants, which came about as a result of the near-miss incident at Songs where a canister almost fell. The congressman recently introduced the Increasing Nuclear Safety Protocols for Extended Canister Transfers, or the Inspect Act, which is a bill that requires Nuclear Regulatory Commission to keep a resident inspector at decommissioning nuclear power plants until all of that spent fuel is transferred from its spent fuel pools to canisters. The seventh recommendation is to fund spent nuclear fuel storage innovation. So the congressman was successful in getting a program created to fund innovation in canisters and how that spent nuclear fuel is stored. Now we are fighting for funding via the appropriations process. And finally, the last recommendation was to follow the best practices of nuclear waste management adopted by military, by the military and internationally. The congressman intends to travel to Switzerland as they have what is called a hot cell where they can repackage spent nuclear fuel from storage canisters. And this could be a solution to the problem of the potential failure of a storage canister at Songs. And I want to conclude by clarifying some of the different groups that are working on solving the problem of the stranded spent nuclear fuel at Songs. I described the work of the Songs Task Force, the group that continues, the group continues to meet and provide insight on the safety of the storage of the spent nuclear fuel at Songs. And I also mentioned the Bipartisan Congressional Spent Nuclear Fuel Solutions Caucus, which is a group made up of members of Congress to drive a solution for stranded spent nuclear fuel across the country. And then finally, there is the Action for Spent Fuel Solutions Now Coalition, which is a separate group created by Southern California Edison to build support for those solutions to the stranded spent fuel. Each of these groups are different and have different purposes. They all play important roles in ensuring the safety of the spent nuclear fuel at Songs and driving a solution that can lead to the removal of that nuclear fuel. Congressman Levin is, will continue working hard to advance those solutions, and we would be happy to provide feedback or periodic updates on that work. And thank you for having me.
Thank you very much, Terry. Very informative update. Moving along with tonight's agenda. Reading of the ordinance titles. Madam Clerk.
There are no ordinance titles.
All right. Thank you. Consent calendar is next. All matters listed in the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one rule called vote. There's no separate discussion on these items unless they are removed from the consent calendar by the council, public, or staff. Are there any items to be removed by the public, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Staff?
We would like to pull item number 11, Dana Point Police Services Monthly Report.
Okay. And council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, number 17.
Is it? Okay. Let's start with item number 11. Mr. City Manager, is it going to be? Chief?
Good evening, council members. So we've kind of revamped our police report to include content that we feel is important to our community based on quality of life issues and just general questions and complaints that we get from our residents. So a couple of things I just wanted to highlight before we get into some statistics. On June 15th, Deputy O'Neill and Deputy Norwood were both honored as the BFW Deputy of the Year and the City of Dana Point Deputy of the Year. You can see their smiling faces up there. On June 26th, the CSU team in concert with the City of Dana Point provided a Neighborhood Watch Block Party. It was a rather big hit. Unfortunately, I didn't attend. I was otherwise engaged with a family outing. But I know a few of the council members and many of the city members were there, and it was a, it was a big hit. And we plan to do one either at the end of this year again or possibly the beginning of next year. It was basically just a community event to get our, our members of the public to speak to city members, Sheriff's Department members, and just kind of bridge that gap between the two. The summer was a busy summer for us. Dana Point went full bore ahead with our concerts in the park and movies in the park. My CSU team, as well as other deputies, provided law enforcement services for five concerts in the park. It was very successful. We had very minimal problems, and everyone was pretty peaceful and happy that things were back. Some additional summer events that we had this year are the Fourth of July Firework Celebration, the Dana Hills High School Graduation, Dana Hills High School Orientation, where we sent our school resource officer and our community service team to just welcome students back to school. OC Park Summer Concert Series, which I already talked about, the redo Vintage Market, and the California Wine Festival. So summer statistics, rather than doing a monthly report, we've decided to kind of do a quarterly report. So this is going to encompass June, July, and August of statistics. So quality of life contacts, that is going to be mental and homeless contacts that we've made. So for over those three months, there was 117 mental health, people with mental health issues contacted in the city, and 162 homeless encounters. That doesn't mean 162 homeless people. Some of those people are contacted on a regular basis for services and calls as needed. Arrests that were made over those three months, we had 33 felony arrests, 106 misdemeanor arrests, 30 warrant arrests, and 10 DUI arrests. Observed enforcement, and observed enforcement is calls that are not, public, members of the public are not calling these in. These are just proactive calls that deputy sheriffs are doing on their own accord. We had 139 pedestrian stops, 89 bike stops, 502 traffic stops, and 738 patrol checks. Citations issued over the summer. Criminal citations, we had 173 citations. Equipment violations were 36, and moving violations were 161. Calls for, calls for service, these are going to include assigned and observed activity. Assigned were 4,542. Observed were 1,842 for a total of 6,384 calls. Short-term rentals. We had a total of four calls during those three months, one of which was a trespassing call, one of which was a suspicious person call, and two were disturbance calls or loud party calls. And that's of the 135 that are permitted in the city. So Dana Point and, did you want to go over these? You want me to go over them? I can go over them. Dana Point Code Enforcement Short-Term Rental Statistics. After-hour patrols were 240 hours. Number of inspections were 3,230 inspections. Number of nuisances found were zero. Complaints to the 24/7 hotline were four. Complaints to the Sheriff's Department were two, which you saw on the previous page. General complaints of other were one. Nuisances immediately abated were zero, and nuisance citations issued were three. We also keep track of our sober living homes in the city. And these are, these get a little bit more extensive. Disturbance calls, we had 12 disturbance calls. One attempted suicide. Two medical aids. Six outside, assist outside agencies, which that's, a lot of times that's assisting the fire department for a medical aid. One sexual assault. One suspicious person call. One assault. One ID theft report. One grand theft report, and two other, and the other are usually going to be citizen assist calls. For a total of 28 calls during that three-month period. So we realize here in Dana Point that exhaust and loud exhaust is a, an issue, and we are listening to what our citizens are saying. So we've allotted, I have allotted a lot of overtime specifically for noise abatement and modified exhaust. Generally, we cite for modified exhaust because that is what actually gets convictions in court. So I myself sat at the corner of Selva and Golden Lantern because I had received a complaint from a citizen, and I sat there for about 45 minutes, and I didn't hear anything out of the ordinary. Unfortunately, cars these days, they're made a little bit different than they were many years ago, and standard stock vehicles, if they're allowed, that is a, that is allowed within the law. Now, if they're modified, that is something that we can actually enforce. So we have been allotting a lot of overtime and resources to that, trying to make a difference. E-bike safety. So I just wanted to kind of talk about the different e-bike classifications. There are three. And as you can see, the following page, after, the following slide after this, kind of goes off of what the California, state of California has allowed us to enforce and what they haven't. Unfortunately, e-bikes are difficult to, unless they're actually breaking a vehicle code law, it's really difficult to do any enforcement on. So a Class 1 is a load speed pedal assisted, stops providing assistance when bike reaches 20 miles per hour. Class 2, again, 20 miles per hour, and it's a low-speed throttle assist. Class 3 is pedal assisted, goes 28 miles an hour, stop providing assistance when bike reaches 28, and prohibited from multi-use paths. So the next slide is what the state of California has put out as far as bicycle e-bike safety. And this is what we are trying to hit home to parents to teach their children how to properly ride a bicycle. They need to go by the same laws as a bicycle. Anyone under the age of 17, that includes 99% of our high school kids, they should all be wearing helmets. We plan on handing out helmets at the high school to do some education. We're also going to be holding a summit within probably the next month of an e-bike summit for parents to come to. And I'm open for any questions.
I have a question. Is there a maximum speed limit for a sidewalk? Can you go as fast as you want, or is it that? That's, I think that's where the e-bike situation comes from, right? Is you?
We have a Muni code of riding bikes on sidewalks. The problem with that is then we have kids riding in the street. So we have to figure what's, what's the safest avenue for these people to travel? And I mean, I, I see every morning kids riding on their, their, you know, e-bikes and bicycles, some on the, on the sidewalk, some on the street. It's, it's hard to enforce because that's all we would be doing is citing kids on bicycle. And I don't, I'm not sure that's the direction that I want to take. I would rather take the direction of education.
Do you feel like you're adequately staffed, understaffed, overstaffed for what you're seeing?
I, I mean, I'll always take more staff. That's a silly question to ask me. No offense, because I'll always, I'll take 100 more. But I feel that for the city, the size that we are, we are, we are adequate, adequately staffed. Yeah. I would eventually like to do more traffic enforcement, but that's going to, you know, like I said, I hire a lot of overtime for other motors from other cities to come to our city to help us out in that area.
And thank you so much for giving this presentation. I, I'm sure like other council members, I get a lot of emails that you cut, you hit them all, which was, which is great. It's nice to, to hear your voice actually speaking on these. Here's how we're addressing it. So thank you so much for, for doing this. This is, this was great.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rossler, I think my question would jump to the short-term rental. And we, we had three nuisances. Any chance that was specific to one property or were those spread out?
So we cited four nuisances, excuse me, three nuisances total, and we got four complaints. They were at three separate properties. One property got a complaint two nights in a row. So there was three citations written for two properties.
Got it. Okay, they were different. And then, so we add, we had the code enforcement, we add that to the police call, police calls, what, that's seven total in three months?
That's correct for total calls, but the complaints were duplicate that Orange County Sheriff's Department received for the noise complaints. They were duplicate. They also went to the hotline at the same time.
Got it. That's why that didn't.
So it was basically four nuisance complaints all summer.
All right. Great. No, thank you very much. That provides some good talking points regarding short-term rentals. And that's my, that's it for me. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just, since we're on that slide, sorry. What does number of inspections mean? I don't know what that means.
So when we, when we spoke about short-term rentals prior, we talked about doing after-hour patrols. And so our code enforcement officers go out and do windshield inspections, and they have a point of like nine or 10 things that they're checking off, and those are actually put into a form and recorded. And so they're going to ensure that they're going to these permitted STRs on a nightly basis. They're going and completing these windshield inspections during their, their patrol hours. So that's how many we did.
Okay, thanks.
I have a quick question for you, Captain Monte Leoni. Thank you, by the way, for the, this format. It's much more valuable to us than the, the same, you know, statistics over and over that don't really help us either make decisions or explain things to the residents. In particular, with the vehicle exhausts, I know that that is a tricky, tricky one for you guys to handle. You said that you've been spending money on overtime on, I know it's on alt-motor type stuff, but in particular, you've been looking at that and speeding. In the data, I noticed 36 equipment violations in the vehicle citations. Would that necessarily be noisy exhaust, or does that fall in that category?
Most of those are noisy exhaust.
But most of them are.
Modified exhaust, correct.
Modified exhaust.
Yes.
And, and to be clear for people, it's a, like, how, how does a motor, if a motor sees a Ferrari going up Selva, chances are it's not modified, it's just really a loud car, right? Do you pull it over anyway? Do they get really good at noticing modified?
They do. They go to specific training, and you have to have probable cause to pull a car over.
Right. So that's, yeah, that's why.
If that is a stock vehicle, that's not probable cause to pull that vehicle over. So, yeah, they do go through specific training for modified exhaust. I sent my staff members to Newport Beach PD. They hosted a one-day class on just modified exhaust and sending cars to referee.
Wow. I can't imagine it would ever be feasible to stand out there also with a decibel meter and, and figure out how loud a vehicle actually is.
So the issue with decimeters are, and this is pretty standard among all of Orange County law enforcement agencies, is they don't hold up in court because you have to show constant proof of calibration and your training, and we're finding that those are not getting, they're getting thrown out. So it's a waste of time. So it's a waste of time, in my opinion, where modified exhaust. We're getting convictions on and they're, you know, going to traffic school or paying, not traffic school, it's not moving violation, but they're paying the fine and moving on. And, and in, within modified exhaust, if, if the deputy chooses to send that person to a referee. That can get very expensive to the tune of twenty five hundred dollars. So that's how we, you know, we, we definitely have our offenders that modify their exhaust to sound. Very illegal. And those people are, you know, that's, that's the people we're seeking.
And I know this issue is not unique to our city, particularly the coastal cities and all up and down the coast. And you guys did the, the collaborative sting operation this summer. So thank you for paying attention to it. I realize it's a difficult one to solve, but it sounds to me like you're certainly working on it.
We're trying.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All in favor? No opposed? Okay, that one passes. Item number seventeen. That was you, Mr. Frost, agreement with the county of Orange to extend operating hours. Dana Point Public Library and Ms. Renders, it's your staff report, correct?
Yes, it is. I'd be happy to provide a brief summary for you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So back in July, when the county librarian started contemplating moving back to pre pandemic operations and library hours. She reached out to us to see if we were still interested in paying for Sunday hours. And it prompted Mike and I to have a conversation and kind of ask some more questions of the librarian about the operations on Sundays. And she indicated that Sundays were the lowest attended day. That we were the only city in Orange County paying for supplemental library hours. And that in addition, she indicated that they were having a lot of lower staffing levels due to COVID. And that being closed Sunday would actually allow them to more efficiently and effectively staff the library. And provide services to patrons on the other days of the week. So from that conversation, we felt it was important to bring it to the council's attention and determine if. The Sunday operations was something, given this information from the librarian, that the council wished to continue.
Thank you. I guess we'll go to you, Mr. Frost, since you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Renders. I, I pulled this primarily because I had a quick, a brief discussion with a former council member, Mayor Wayne Rayfield. Quickly today. And he expressed some concern that there's some programs for some, a portion of our senior citizen community. That occurred on this Sunday. So while we're, we're keeping it open. There's also groups utilizing the library. I guess as, as almost a meeting location for things such as cards or stamp meetings. And I, I don't know quite all the programs that's going on there. I do very much agree that the city of Dana Point should not be paying for the Orange County's library. They, they need to figure out how to fund that correctly. What I did want to make sure is that that group who's having those programs meeting there. Felt comfortable that they could come to us or come to our rec. Group and work, at least identify the programs that they think are valuable. And, and, and I want to make sure our staff will work with them to incorporate those into what we do with the rec center as appropriate. And that way we sort of solve, solve both issues. We're not cutting a fifty thousand dollar check every year. And we're still able to provide an opportunity for those programs. So that, that's really why I pulled that. I do agree with us sort of shutting down this contract. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you know the answer to this, but what are, are, we're the only city in the entire county that's paying for this? I read that in the staff report, so I think the answer is yes.
Yes, we're the only city paying for supplemental hours.
And do you know what other cities' hours are and would ours be the same as other cities if we did not renew this contract?
I believe that the librarian is working to try to standardize the library hours across. Across the system as, as she can and with the staffing level she's dealing with.
All right, thank you.
All right. Anything else on that item? I, I, I tend to believe that anything that's being done at the library on Sundays. Well, back when it was open prior to COVID on Sundays. Could probably be moved to another day at the library, another day of the week, or maybe another facility here in town. The, the data shows pretty low, relatively low usage of that for what we pay to the county for them to have it open. And it sounds like the county would prefer to work around different scheduling as well. I understand it'll have some impact on people, but I think it can be mitigated. So for that, I will move the item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well, non opposed? And it passes. I am going to go back for the record. No public comments on either of those items, is that correct?
Correct.
I didn't have anything up here. And then, any public comment on the overall consent calendar?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then I will move the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye as well. That passes unanimously as well. Thank you. All right, that brings us to general public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, if we have any public speakers on any of the other items, I will read off the rules for public comments. Brings us to. Item number nineteen. Which is fee schedule for accessory, for accessory dwelling permits that the city, that the city council hold a public hearing. Adopt a resolution entitled the resolution of the city council Dana Point, California approving a fee schedule for accessory dwelling units.
Mr. Mayor, could I interrupt for one moment?
Sure.
Just to clarify for the record in terms of public comment. We didn't have any public comment here this evening, live public comment. But we did receive some public comments in advance, which are part of your packets. And in the record, just for the sake of people who submitted those, we just want to make sure that they're aware.
As always, yes, and the, the city council members did receive those correspondence prior to the meeting. We've had a chance to read them. So thank you. I was simply not talking about live public comments, time limits, et cetera. Thank you, but thanks for covering that. So the resolution of the city council, the city of Dana Point, California approving a fee schedule for accessory dwelling permits. This will be a public hearing. Let us start with the staff report, Mr. City Manager.
Brenda Wizneski, our Community Development Director, will provide the report.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. In August, the council approved your ordinance for accessory dwelling units in the community. As part of that was creating an accessory dwelling unit permit. So tonight we bring forward for you the actual permit fee. It's calculated in accordance with state law that allows us to reimburse ourselves for the time spent in developing the ordinance itself. So I'm going back through our efforts in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one and calculating those expenses. Amortizing those over a five year period, assuming about ten ADU permits per year. The permit fee for an ADU permit is fifty four hundred dollars and twenty two dollars, five thousand four hundred and twenty two dollars. So that will be the ADU permit fee. And if you have any questions, I'm available to answer those.
Thank you very much. To the council, questions? Mr. Frost, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brenda, we, we recently also did a zoning update. I suppose it wasn't ordinance, but it was a zoning text update for Doheny Village. When those, when, when an applicant comes to do a project down there, will they be paying the same sort of fee upfront?
Only if they had an accessory dwelling unit. So it doesn't mean they don't, they don't, we have, typically when you create permits, we don't have this reimbursement effort. The difference in this case is actually an ADU as a required state law. So the law specifically allows us to reimburse ourselves in this case.
Is this, would this be basically our only sort of upfront fee that an applicant resident would pay? To do something to their property, generally?
To my knowledge, this is the only fee that we created for the personal reimbursement.
And it's, it's probably fair to say primarily because it was initiated by the state and not necessarily by residents or our city council or our planning commission.
Yeah, that's a good way of looking at it. City Manager Hillary might have some other permits he was thinking of that might be reimbursement based.
So not permit fee related, but we do have. Development impact fees that do reimburse us for construction efforts. And I, I know you'd asked me this question earlier today or this morning, I've had a chance to look at it. Whether or not we could bundle up all of our planning effort expenditures as we're moving. You know, into changing, changing codes that allows people to do more. And whether or not we could bundle those up and, and allocate them up, if you will, based on permits that come in the future. We have not done that historically. But we have gotten reimbursements for certain things, particularly to get town center improvements. So if somebody goes and does something in the town center area, there's a, it was determined to be a nexus. So they will pay some amount of money to help reimburse us for our costs incurred down there. But it wasn't, we didn't have planning costs associated with that.
If I can just give you a little more background on this issue. When the state requires the city to do something, if it costs money. If the state doesn't provide for the money, it's known as an unfunded state mandate. And the state has to reimburse us for it. Lots of litigation on what is and is not a state mandate because, not surprisingly, the state doesn't want to have to reimburse us for things that they make us do. So one of their strategies that's pretty common, when they impose an obligation on a local agency and they don't want to have to reimburse us. Is they will come up with a provision as exists in this ordinance where they say that the cost the city incurs can be recovered through a fee. So there's a state authorized fee. There's a lot of litigation out there as to whether that is adequate for the state to avoid unfunded mandate litigation. But bottom line is, that's the rationale, in my opinion. Again, I'm speculating a little bit, but you know, just, you know, from watching, I think that's the reason that they include these reimbursement provisions. And in this case, we're taking advantage of it instead of suing the state to recover for an unfunded mandate.
And one final question, Brenda. Two years from now, somebody comes in, wants to do an ADU to their house. They've long forgotten about this meeting, even though they were watching. How are we going to communicate to them this upfront fee? Only because I, I tend to think most residents would not be prepared for this fee. I think most people expect to pay for the plan checker, for the building inspector to walk out there. But perhaps this is sort of a nuance. How do you, how do we plan to communicate this upfront?
Our permit process is pretty well formed to allow us to communicate well with the residents, not only through our website, but also handouts in the community development department. Where we talk about how to get from A to the end of the line with the, with the actual permit. So this will be disclosed as all part of that, trying to be user friendly and walk people through the process.
Great, okay. As long as we're nice upfront in that nice little one page summary, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions for the staff? No, then I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
The public hearing is closed. Brings it back to the city council. Mr. Valar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. So I, I'd like to talk a little bit about the fee and. You know, in the staff report, it talks about. Allowing a fee waiver for the ADU fee, building fees and site development fee if applicable. If you deed restrict for extremely low, very low and low income. So I'd, I'd actually like to make a motion to amend that. I'd like to make a motion that for the ADUs, that we add that opportunity for the fee waiver. For those three fees, the ADU fee, the building fee and the site development fee, if that's applicable. If the deed is restricted for only eight years. But it only applies to extremely low and very low income as defined by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So eight years and then for only extremely low and low, not moderately low.
I'm processing. I think we got you. I, I. Does anyone want to second that? Like we all are trying to just process. Looking at my RENA categories. Madam Clerk. Actually, would you just, would you read again your motion?
Sure. So fee waiver for all three fees if applicable, the ADU fee, the building fee and the supplement, the site development fee. If it's deed restricted for eight years. But applies only to very low and low. Trying to incentivize actually. Getting affordable housing, right, to make it, to make it. Worthwhile.
And excuse me, Councilmember Valar, do you mean very low and low or extremely low?
Thank you. Sorry, I said two different things. Extremely low and very low. Sorry, extremely low and very low. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I will second that. But clarification before I do. So waiving all of the building fees and the, the ADU fees. For those two lowest categories of RENA affordable housing. And only those categories and only for eight years. Okay, I'll second it. Any discussion? Anyone need a primer? Ask Community Development Director about the different RENA categories?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brenda, or if anybody has it. Could you, could you give us the one bedroom and two bedroom per month on that in Orange County? Does anybody have that close? I was just curious.
I don't have it handy. I'll, I'll look for it.
I'm just, actually, I guess I would have a question for Councilmember Valar. How did you come up with eight? Was that, was that sort of the?
Matches the RENA cycle. At the last, the last time we spoke about this, I threw out five just because I grabbed that number out of the air. And City Attorney actually just kind of recommended maybe to think about eight. And that does sound reasonable. It matches, matches RENA. I mean, obviously what I'm trying to do here, right, instead of just having affordable housing numbers to actually try to incentivize that actually happening. But the spirit of what I'm trying to do is, you know, moderate income. That is decently, that is a decent income, right? So I'm talking about the extremely low and very low, that that's where you'd get the benefit of it. Right, and to try to generate that is, is really where I'm, I'm trying to go with this. And to have a deed restriction for the lifetime, no, nobody would do that. Right, so trying to find a reasonable number there, eight years to me, because it matches RENA seems, seems reasonable.
Any other questions? So. Ms. Wizneski. So I have this right. The, the RENA income categories are very low, low, moderate. And above moderate for housing, correct?
They start with the extremely low. Extremely low, very low, low and moderate.
Okay.
And Kelly's pulled up here. Are you looking for, I think we're looking for the actual rents?
Because I can't, I don't think we can do this accurately or, or clearly without that. Depending on. I know a decent. I know a decent amount about RENA, I feel like. But I'm looking at some documents that are showing very low, low, moderate and above moderate. And Councilmember Valar brought that up. Do we want to?
I've got the Orange County Community Resources 2021 income limits for extremely low and very low.
Should be below fifty percent.
Depends on the size of the household.
Right.
Single household or extremely low is twenty eight thousand two fifty. Very low is forty seven thousand one hundred. And then, I don't know, it goes up to eight person households. So I don't know how many of those you want. But I have them up on my screen. If you have a particular, maybe it's a you know, couple with two kids.
The second lowest category. The second lowest. At the top, the top level of that ought to be fifty percent of the median income, correct?
That's the question for over there.
Sorry, can we restate the question? I was looking for the rents.
The highest percent of income that we want to allow is fifty percent of median income. Is that correct?
That's, that's very low.
The high end of the second category, regardless of what we call these things. So below fifty percent median income, that then translates to certain monthly rents.
Yes.
I think that was a question that maybe Mr. Frost asked.
Exactly.
I think we also should have an idea of what that translates to. So do we know what the monthly rent is?
I do not have it in front of me, but I will tell you that I did do the calculations early on when this first came up. And the intent is trying to ensure that the savings of the fee is enough incentive to counteract the loss of rent. It's not. It's not going to cover the, the loss of rent because it's such a small amount as comparison. So a fee waiver is really just a component or a piece of an incentive. It's not something that's going to fully make someone do it because it's going to save them money.
How can we say it if we don't know what the rents are? But we do know. Oh, you had, you have looked it up. Okay, okay. I got you. I tend to believe you. So while I seconded this, I just want to clarify. So regardless of what we call this, fifty percent or lower of the median income when we're looking at RENA categories, right? Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Vixor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess maybe I need a RENA primer here if you know, we're talking about doing this for eight years. But the incentive is to actually get these things built. Doesn't matter for arena numbers whether they're actually built or not. Are we already getting credit somehow for to meet our arena numbers through these ADUs?
Yeah, it's two different things. When we are developing our housing element, we create forecasts based on what our past paths have been with our ADUs. So we do get assumed credit of ten dwelling at ADUs per year. That's what we're assuming for the eight year period. And then each reporting period, we report what actually occurs. Like say we end up having twenty ADUs per year. So then at the end of that reporting period, end of the eight year period, perhaps we can assume more ADUs that will go towards our arena in the future.
So when we get.
Let me just add to that. The reason that I had made the suggestion at the last meeting to go from five to eight was that during this current cycle, there's a formula as you just heard, where we're going to get credit for ADUs where it's just assumed that they're going to be affordable. But in the next housing element cycle, we'll only get credit as I understand it if they're actually built. You won't get the presumed credit. So another, if they're actually built and restricted as affordable. So that was kind of what the thinking is. And correct me if I, I think I've got that right, but I don't profess this to be my specialty.
Okay, so if we if the deed restriction runs out in eight years for the next RENA cycle and it becomes a market rate dwelling, how do we still get credit for the ones that were built and now that we've built market rate?
Well, presumably, you know, we're adopting this now. So, you know, anybody that built and restricted in the next couple of months, yeah, it would run out probably. But we're talking about a fee schedule that'll be in place for a while. So if something gets built in one year or two years or three years, if it gets built and if it gets deed restricted for more than eight years, it will still be deed restricted during the next cycle. So we would get some credit. So that was, that was just, that was the reasoning behind the eight years as opposed to five years. If it's something the council wants to do, that's, you know.
Okay, I'll, for now, hear other questions. Maybe I'll raise some more. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Sure. So just for clarity here, I'm I'm not proposing this because I want to get credit for RENA numbers. The RENA numbers to me are silly. We're just creating a number, but we're not actually creating housing. We have an opportunity here to do some good where we could actually create some affordable housing. Maybe it'll only be five in the next five years, but that's five more than we have now. I'm trying to incentivize actually creating affordable housing and not just a number that we, that could generate affordable housing, but doesn't actually do it. So that's what I'm trying to do here without really forcing someone's hand. But hey, if this is a good option for you and you want to save potentially seventeen thousand dollars on some fees by making your deed restricted for eight years and you rent it out to your mother-in-law because she falls into this category, great. You've created some affordable housing that can go to somebody who needs it. Right? And what I'm hoping for is after those eight years, maybe the bottom of your heart, you'll be like, I'm going to continue to do this. But they don't have to. I mean, having a life, a lifetime of deed restricted, that's unreasonable to think that that somebody would would do that, in my opinion. Right? So we got to have something that, that makes it somewhat incentivized. And to me, the eight years seems like a reasonable number and we'd actually generate some affordable housing in, in our city. Not a lot, but some. And I think we, like I said, we could do some good here by, by doing that. That's, that's my, that's my push.
Any other discussion or questions? Mr. Frost, looks like you have something.
I was going to mention, actually, that's a, that's a compelling argument, actually. A lot, in my opinion, a lot better than the inclusionary housing argument. Incentivizing is at least not taking something from someone. Although on the ADUs, we have these past couple of months been working with our city attorney and staff in basically pushing the state's the state's ordinance, pushing it back towards our current zoning. Why? Because I think generally speaking, we didn't like the, the state's proposal, the state's ordinance. Because why? They don't respect our setbacks, parking, whatnot. So while I do think it's good to incentivize affordable housing, should we be incentivizing a product that we don't think our community will like? Even if they're affordable, should we be doing that? I think actually, the more I think about it, I prefer to probably go the, the old route and, and, and work with some of our sort of larger developers. We've got a big opportunity with the school district. We'll have to choose our priorities, but in school districts, we've got a big opportunity to have affordable housing there. So I would probably not want to further incentivize ADUs. And I'd rather attack affordable housing sort of through the standard processes, I think. And step one would be the school district. If we hold the school district accountable or the only up zone they get is affordable housing, that's us. Now, somebody's going to have to tell the school district that they might not make, make their financial goals, but you know, if affordable housing is that important to us, we'll start there. That's a little precursor to my vote.
Do you have anything else? Okay, good. No, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I want to echo what Councilman Frost said. I mean, it is a compelling art. I mean, it's, I think we all have big hearts and want to do what we can to help those less fortunate than us. So I mean, certainly I think the motives are, are pure and good. But Councilman Frost brought up some good point that, that just went through my head. We're talking about the reason we did the ADU ordinance was because the state basically forced us to. And just to kind of put it in, you know, simpler terms to make it easier to build an ADU. And you know, one of the things that is our responsibility as council members is to you know, consider, well, the zoning we have, for example, when we zone areas of single family residents, residential zones, which I think are a good thing. And I think we have a compelling interest in in maintaining single family residential zones. This this ADU ordinance that we passed at the, the hest of the state, I think is part of the state effort to tackle the overall problem they've identified of the lack of, of affordable housing in California. And this is one of the things they're, they're trying to do. And I guess it you know, certainly an incentive to develop something for low income people is, again, a noble and good goal, but I, I think what it's doing is the encouragement of more ADUs is making, would make our residential neighborhoods, you know, add people, make them more dense. Basically go to the character of the single family residential neighborhoods. And what, what kind of made me think of what we're talking about is you know, I know I am, I think based on what we did last time, the, the entire council wants to protect the integrity of our single family neighborhoods. We approved an opposition to SB nine. And I don't think we included SB ten in there. I know both have passed. But that was again, something where we were you know, not happy with the direction the state was going in trying to, you know, do something to address the housing crisis. Again, you know, good motives, but not something that would be you know, would be in accordance with the, the residential neighborhoods that we want to protect. And you know, the the idea of a of a deed restriction for a certain amount of time. Again, and I do appreciate, I mean, you're, you're looking for solutions and that's, I think a commendable thing to do. But I, I think it has an inherent flaw in that basically when the deed restriction is over and I think, as you said, I mean, we might hope out of the goodness of their heart, the individual might continue to only rent to low income people. I mean, the more cynical among us might say that's probably not going to happen once it becomes a market rate availability. So all we're really doing in my view is incentivizing not the development of permanent affordable housing, which I think is the goal. But it's really just kind of a temporary, we're really it's a temporary affordable housing. We're really more incentivizing kind of a delayed market rate housing, which I don't think would be consistent with our positions of how we are, are looking to protect our, our single family neighborhoods. So you know, I I guess that was a long way of saying I, I'm not sure I can support the motion and I'll leave it at that for now. If there's more discussion, I'll jump in later. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you. I, I understand where my colleagues here on my left are coming from. They, we, they're right. You know, we spend a lot of time trying to understand what the state's sort of crazy ADU laws are. And we put a lot of time, energy into trying to sort that out and fit that into the character of our town. I actually don't think that these two are related to what you two are talking about all that much, quite frankly. It comes down to simple math for me. If, if a, if a unit, someone builds an ADU in their backyard and they're going to get something like five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars less per month in rent if they, if they make this affordable. Eight years is ninety six months. So they're going to forego forty eight thousand to ninety six thousand dollars in rent over the eight years to save seventeen thousand dollars today. This is not incentivizing. No one is building an ADU to make it affordable as long as it stays at the fifty percent or below median income level. No one is doing this to save the seventeen thousand dollars. I don't see it as a bad gesture. I spend a lot of time on Orange County Housing Finance Trust and some other places that pay attention to this RENA stuff. If someone's going to do it anyway, I'm okay with foregoing charging them the seventeen thousand dollars if they can find a way to make it. And quite frankly, the eight years thing doesn't bother me because I would hope that all of this talk about everyone needs a free house will be gone by eight years from now. And we won't be jammed with all these outrageous RENA numbers to begin with, or the state will have figured out how to fund affordable housing, other places and solve the crunch on, on housing, maybe lift some of the sequel requirements that make it so expensive and difficult to build. But to me, this doesn't hurt. I don't believe it creates a huge demand to build ADUs. The math is simply isn't there. You'd be a fool to, to build one of these, make it affordable for eight years to save seventeen thousand dollars when it costs you ninety, forty eight to ninety six thousand dollars to do it. So for that, I'm okay with supporting it. And if you guys have any follow-up questions or comments, we can do that.
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
So thank you for putting it that way. That's, you, you really did hit the nail on the head with the assumption that Councilmember Vixor is kind of saying in his argument is that this is going to create a lot more ADUs and we trying to control them. I, I agree with you. I don't think this does. I don't think this creates more. But in the resolution right now, it does say that you can get your fees waived if you have a deed restriction for life to extremely low, very low and low. Well, that's, those are just words on a paper. No, nobody in their right mind would say, oh, I'm going to do that. So we're trying to make something here. If, if that wording is in there, well, then there is a way for you to get the fees waived. It's already in there. So do we want to take that completely out? Because to me, the spirit of what we're trying to do with that statement is, okay, we're trying to incentivize somebody to think twice and say, yeah, maybe it is worth the seventy thousand. I agree with you, Mayor Federico, is most people are going to say that's, that's not worth it. I'll lose in the end. But maybe one or two will say, yeah, that's a good deal for me right now because I don't have the seventeen thousand to put into the fees. So I can get that waived. Great. That's the spirit of where we're trying to head with this. And I don't think it's going to create more ADUs. I just think it's going to make somebody think twice and maybe get a couple of affordable housing units for those that need it. And believe it or not, I was in that category when I was a kid. Like this would have been a great deal for my parents. Right? Is wow, we could get something affordable, like being on that side of it, trying to get folks that can afford to live in Dana Point. Maybe it's just one or two families or two or three people, but man, that, that's, that's something good that we can do without really impacting the ADU environment all of that much.
Mr. Vixor, I saw you making some notes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I'll just, I'll be brief. The you know, ADUs, in my view, are not the way to address the housing crisis, even if the state thinks that is part of their effort to do so. You know, if if waiving the fees, I think I, I heard it over there and I think you may have even said it, waiving the fees is not going to do it. And even waiving the fees with this, you know, eight year deed restriction is not going to incentivize it. Then I, I really don't know. Then I, I really don't know why we're doing it. I actually then agree with what you said. Why? Why are we waiving, waiving it at all? I mean, take, uh, looking at the, the recommended action, um, which didn't include the eight-year, uh, deed restriction. But it did include a waiver of, I think up to seventeen thousand dollars, something like that. Um, which I think everybody is saying that that's, you know, that's not an incentive at all. So after hearing that, maybe, I do agree, maybe we shouldn't waive that either. Um, so, you know, and I, I agree with Councilman Frost that, you know, addressing the housing crisis not going to be through the ADUs, it needs to be done somewhere else. So I guess where I'm landing now after hearing all the, uh, excellent discussion, I think, is that, um, I mean, if we're going to oppose the fees, I think I would, I would support not, you know, not waiving the fees at all. I want to make sure that that doesn't affect, I think I heard earlier, it doesn't affect Rena numbers or anything else. The motion certainly wasn't meant to address Rena numbers, but if that's what we do, or I want to make sure there's no, I don't know if that's what we're going to do, but I just want to make sure there's no, uh, unintended consequences to that.
The existing, uh, fee waiver is actually part of our old existing fee study, and we have calculated that as part of our housing element as, as a housing program to encourage affordable housing. So that's something we've been relying on for a long time.
Okay, so that was part of my question. Um, so if we did do that, that would affect our Rena.
Not Rena, but just, just our overall housing compliance.
Okay. Well, I don't want to make us out of compliance, but, uh, so I guess that's where I would, I would come down. I guess I'm back to the original recommended action. Um, so I'm not sure. Well, I'll let the mayor figure out the procedure.
We have a, we have a motion, uh, and a second, uh, already on, uh, Mr. Valar's, uh, recommended action. So we're discussing that right now. Um, we can, I think we have one more comment and then we'll call that question and see where we go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think it moves the needle either way. I, probability that somebody's, does anything relative to eight years versus, um, in perpetuity, I agree. Probably doesn't move the needle. But do we want to promote a real estate product which, you know, for the last two months, we have been saying isn't good for our community? I mean, in our ordinance relative to the state ordinance, it says that basically. I'd actually be, if perhaps we need to have subsequent meetings, actually think the idea may be very good as long as the product meets the, the development standards, which our residents feel is good. And so my main issue is that it's relative to the ADUs. Um, and I, I didn't know you were going to bring this up. Sorry, I would, I would have probably, at first I was going down the math and I, I think it's a really, um, great discussion because we should create better incentives, uh, either that or just start writing checks. But maybe not for ADUs. And that's kind of been my argument ever since, uh, day one on the ADUs is let's, let's, let's get a better real estate product out there, something that the neighbor will be more happy with. And so, uh, I, I guess that's my final comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, let's call the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Frost. Councilmember Vexoric.
No.
Councilmember Valar.
Yes.
Mayor Federico.
Yes.
That is a tie, so that does not pass two to one with Mayor Proton Miller absent.
The motion.
The motion fails.
Uh, for lack of a majority. Floor is open for motions. Mr. Vexoric. You don't have one. I will move the recommended action from the staff.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Councilmember Frost. Councilmember Vexoric.
Aye.
Councilmember Valar.
No.
Mayor Federico.
Yes.
That motion passes three, one, one with Mayor Proton Miller absent.
Um, thank you, staff, uh, for, for rolling with all that. And thanks to, to my colleagues for, uh, a very good and thorough and collegial discussion on that stuff. Brings us to unfinished business. Let's see, item number twenty, uh, fiscal year twenty, 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 twenty-one, fourth quarter financial report and proposed FY twenty-two carryover budget adjustments from FY twenty-one. Uh, recommended action is that we receive and file the financial report, amend the FY twenty-two budget by authorizing the carryover and appropriation of encumbrment and unencumbered and unencumbered funds from FY twenty-one and twenty-two, updating FY twenty-two revenue projections as detailed in the report, and defer action to transfer FY twenty-one general fund surplus per financial policy number two thirty-four until no later than the city's FY twenty-two mid-year financial report. Mr. Kilibr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this report does cover the, the final numbers that we have that are not audited yet for fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, we did discuss, uh, the financial performance with the city's financial review committee a week ago. And I just want to quickly summarize. I know it's a, quite a lengthy report. But just focusing mostly on the general fund, uh, COVID impacts on particularly our hotel TOT taxes and sales taxes are lost last year from what we had thought we would have gotten before COVID was about five point six million. Um, we did receive some relief, um, significant relief through the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. Um, that did backfill four million dollars of that loss. Um, and we did cover those losses, if you will, uh, to finish the year, um, in good shape still. Uh, by, uh, reducing our personnel costs, both through vacancies and foregoing, uh, staff raises last year. And we reduced costs in a lot of other areas and other sheriffs, uh, provided a, a good chunk of, of help for us. Uh, Kirsten, uh, battling getting fully staffed up and, uh, filling shifts with overtime, which is less expensive for us, but it does, uh, tax the, uh, uh, the ranks of our sheriff's staff. Um, but we did finish, uh, last year, uh, within budget or I've mentioned previously that our reserves remain fully funded. And we did finish the year with more unassigned fund balance compared to what, uh, our financial policies require. And as Mayor Federico mentioned, the third action tonight is to defer a required transfer, uh, from the general fund to the community investment account in the capital improvement fund until early after the fall winter, uh, when we see if we have, uh, continued, uh, significant negative impacts particularly to our hotels. Uh, but that deferral of that action, uh, will be no later than our mid-year report, which we anticipate bringing to council in March of twenty-two. In regards to fiscal year twenty-two, uh, this report does provide, uh, for carrying over, if you will, we're asking for budget for two hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars of existing contracts. Um, we're amending, proposing to amend the revenue budget for the second tranche of the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, to bring in the addition, the other four million dollars that was allotted to, uh, allocated to Dana Point. Um, and there are four hundred thousand dollars of increased budget asks, um, covering several items, uh, in, uh, an enhanced sidewalk repair program, some technology upgrades, um, filling out our holiday decor program and also some traffic signal maintenance, uh, work. Um, and again, with all of these adjustments recommended, the reserves, general fund reserves remain fully funded. And so that was, that's the general fund. There are a host of other adjustments for the other funds that roll over capital, uh, and facilities projects and handle some of the funding, uh, sources for those, carrying those over from FY twenty-one to twenty-two. And otherwise we're in fairly good shape and we're just crossing our fingers and, uh, keeping an eye on what happens this fall and winter. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions? No questions. Um, I will, uh, momentarily make a motion here, but I do want to say it should be very difficult for us to, uh, deviate from one of our financial policies. The recommended action and item number three is that we, we defer the transfer of our, uh, any general fund surplus. But this, I just want to say this was debated at length in the financial review committee. And we're only doing this because of the uncertainty. Uh, and we don't want to have to transfer it over and then, you know, want to bring it back in case things don't continue to trend the way they're supposed to. Having said all of that, um, I do think we put the, the hard thought into it, but before we vote on this, we should know it should be always very much an anomaly, uh, to deviate from one of our financial policies, which quite frankly saved us last year. Um, and will save us in the future if we stick to them. And I will move the three recommended action items.
I'll second it.
Comment? Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, again, want to congratulate, uh, thank our city manager for his work on this. I read this is very good news. I'm always looking at the TOT from the hotels and obviously it's uh, not as much, uh, as we had hoped before the pandemic hit, but, uh, again, the conservative budget, budgeting approach has served us well in that, uh, we did better, uh, than projected, not as good as we would have hoped pre-pandemic, but uh, better than we, uh, thought we would do, uh, once the pandemic hit. So, uh, I, I think we had some good news, uh, as much good news as we could have, and it's a testament to, uh, my, my fellow city council members and to Mr. Kilibr and all the staff who put in all the hard work on, on putting together our budget and making sure that the city keeps running. So I just wanted to, uh, thank the staff, uh, for all their hard work on this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Frost, anything?
No.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Frost. Councilmember Vexoric.
Aye.
Councilmember Valar.
Aye.
Mayor Federico.
Aye.
That motion passes four to one with Mayor Proton Miller absent.
Thank you very much. That brings us to, uh, city council reports. Mr. Frost.
Ms. Shayna, I will make sure to get you my list of meetings. Uh, I, I did want to share, uh, had a great opportunity on Sunday night to go to the Pet Project Foundation Gala. Uh, the mayor was there, but, um, gosh, one of our top couple fundraiser, our, um, philanthropic groups, uh, saving animals, working with our, uh, with our shelter down there, fantastic people and, uh, sort of one of the groups that kind of helped define Dana Point as a great place. Uh, and that would be it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Valar.
I've turned in my meetings and I have nothing to, thanks.
Mr. Vexoric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report. I've already turned in my list of meetings. Thank you.
I have also turned in my list of meetings. I have nothing to report. Um, Mr. Munoz.
I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Kilibr?
I have nothing this evening.
Wow. Uh, that will bring us to adjournment. Uh, thanks, everyone who joined. Thanks to everyone, uh, who joined us. The next regular meeting of the city council will be October fifth, two thousand twenty-one at five PM here in the city council chamber located at three, three, two, eight, two Golden Lantern, Suite two, ten, Dana Point, California. Please remember to shop local. Have a good night.